All right, good evening. The Board is returning from closed session where no action was taken and at this time, we'll call our regular open session to order. All items discussed or voted upon this evening have been posted as required by state law, and I extend a warm welcome to those present and to our television viewers. The Board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the Superintendent and her staff. I ask that you turn your cellphones to silent if you've not already done so, and we really appreciate the time you've taken to join us and your interest in Waco ISD. At this time, please pause with me for a moment of silence as we take time for prayer, contemplation, reflection, or meditation. Thank you. And now the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. DeBeere.
Thank you, Madam President. Tonight, we're pleased to have two students from University High School to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please welcome Yvette Pedrone and DeAndre London Ridge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, students. Dr. Kinkanen, members of the Board, would you please join me in front of the dais for tonight's special recognitions? We'll begin the special recognition portion of our meeting this evening, as we do each month, with an introduction of our pledge leaders who both attend University High School. Yvette Pedrone is a senior who says that math is her favorite subject. She's involved in National Honor Society, Future Business Leaders of America, Upward Bound, the Texas Association of Future Educators, and serves as a Career in Technical Education Ambassador. When not busy with her many activities, and I don't know when that would be, Yvette enjoys spending time with her family and friends. One of Yvette's teachers said, "Yvette is always ready to work with a smile on her face. She cares about others and is very respectful. Yvette has been great for University High School." Yvette's parents, Matilda and Miguel Pedrone, have accompanied her here tonight. Would you please stand so that we can recognize you as well as your daughter? DeAndre London Ridge is also a senior at University, and his favorite class is history. DeAndre participates in National Honor Society, Upward Bound, is active with the LEED program, and some of our viewers at home might recognize him as an announcer for Waco ISD-TV at times. In his spare time, DeAndre enjoys reading. One of his teachers says, "Mr. Ridge makes it a point to put a smile on the face of others. He is the type of student that teachers will be talking to their future classes about." DeAndre's mother, LaMonica Haines, has joined him this evening. Would you please stand so that we can recognize you as well? I want to thank our pledge leaders and their families. Up next, I get to tell you a great story about our Scarlet Line officers. This past June, the Waco High School Scarlet Line officers attended the Dance Officer Camp in Houston, participating in workshops and classes for leadership, technique, choreography, and routines. In their officer team competition, they performed a Level 5 high kick routine, earning a blue superior ribbon and a red ribbon for excellence in leadership and choreography. But beyond that, each officer was selected individually as an All-American and invited to perform in the All-American halftime show at the Buffalo Wild Wings Citrus Bowl in Orlando, Florida. As part of the All-Star experience, they'll visit Disney World, enjoy a New Year's Eve celebration at Universal Studios, and then perform for 65,000 fans and millions of viewers on national TV. This evening, we're proud to recognize from the Waco High School Scarlet Line Captain Taisha Adams. First Lieutenant Aviana Smith. And Second Lieutenant Kiara Lord. The Waco High School Scarlet Line is under the direction of co-directors LaShonda Gaines and Wanda Johnson. And if you're the family member of one of our Scarlet Line officers, would you please stand so that we can congratulate you as well this evening? Congratulations to our incredible Scarlet Line officers. We can't wait to watch your performance on national TV. In 2018, the University High School Boys Cross Country Team made school history by earning the program's first district title. This year, the team came back strong and claimed back-to-back titles by winning the UIL 5A District 14 Championship on October 17th. That win qualified the team to compete at the UIL 5A Region 2 Meet on October 28th, where they placed ninth overall. Please welcome our back-to-back UIL District Champions and Region 12 Qualifiers from the University High School Cross Country Team, beginning with Jacob Cassiano. Manuel Coronado. Jaden DeLeon. Oscar Dominguez. Leo Gonzalez. Isaiah Herrera. Austin Maximus. And there's one member of this incredible team who earned an extra bit of recognition. At the Region 2 Meet, University High School Junior Kendrick Scott placed 16th out of the 180 runners in the meet and qualified for the UIL 5A State Cross Country Meet, where he placed in the top 75 in the state. Please welcome our UIL 5A Cross Country State Qualifier from University High School, The Cross Country Program is led by Assistant Coaches Belinda Dinman and Natalie Gutierrez. Head Coach Ricky Perez wasn't able to be with us tonight. Now, University High School isn't the only school with a strong cross-country presence. Anna Garner, a senior at Waco High School, finished second in the UIL 6A District 14 Meet on October 17th. And that qualified Anna to run in the UIL 6A Region 2 Meet, held on October 28th. Anna placed in the top 40 at regionals, and this is incredibly impressive. Anna has been a regional qualifier for three of her four years at Waco High School. The Waco High School Cross Country Program is led by Assistant Coach Stephen Petrie and Head Coach Jeff Bray. And if you're a parent or family member of one of these incredible athletes that we've recognized tonight, would you please stand so we can take a moment to congratulate you We're incredibly proud to be represented at all levels of competition by absolutely outstanding student athletes. In partnership with the National Park Service, the Waco Mammoth National Monument sponsored an art contest to celebrate the 10th Annual National Fossil Day, which was celebrated on October 16th during Earth Science Week. Local entries were judged by the Martin Museum of Art at Baylor University on categories including originality, creativity, and how well the submission reflected the theme "Extinct Giants and Survivors of the Last Ice Age." I'm excited tonight that we get to recognize three Waco ISD students whose entries placed at the local level, and that you'll have an opportunity to see their artwork on the screens around the room. First, please welcome, from South Waco Elementary School, Maya Rodriguez, who placed first in the age 8 and under category. Natalie Rodriguez, from Cesar Chavez Middle School, took first place for ages 9 through And Michaela Kirkpatrick, also from Cesar Chavez Middle School, placed third in the ages 9 through 13 group. These very talented art students were guided by their art teacher Sigrid Whitford, from South Waco Elementary School. And Bonnie Holmstrom, from Cesar Chavez Middle School. And if you're a family member who's here tonight with one of these young artists, would you please stand so that we can congratulate you and thank you for sharing your child and their talents with Waco ISD? Waco ISD's theme for the 2019-2020 school year is "Rise." The theme celebrates learning and growing, as well as overcoming challenges. It also recognizes that no school district rises by itself. Instead, Waco ISD rises when families, employees, and the community join together to realize their shared hopes and dreams for the district's students and their future. Waco ISD is blessed to have scores of community partners who are deeply invested in the district's students and their success. And each month, we're going to be recognizing a community partner who's making a difference with the RISE Award for Outstanding Community Partners. This month, I'm really excited that we get to recognize Pack of Hope. Pack of Hope currently provides packs of food over weekends and holidays for 497 Waco ISD students across all elementary and middle school campuses. By providing food to our students experiencing food insecurity, this team and their volunteers fulfills a basic need of many of our students and prepares them to arrive at school that following Monday, ready to learn. Accepting the award this evening, please welcome Pack of Hope co-founders Jane Bounds And I also want to take a moment to introduce you to some Pack of Hope Board members who have joined the co-founders this evening. Please welcome Alma Ramirez, Linda King, Alice Todd, Diana Rodriguez, and Daniel Bounds. This is a truly special program, and I want to extend a heartfelt thank you to Pack of Hope, their Board members, their volunteers. You really are making an incredible difference in the lives of students in McLennan County. And with the presentation of the RISE Award, we conclude the special recognitions for this
Next on the agenda is Superintendent's Report.
Okay, just a couple of items this evening. First of all, I wanted to let you know that we do have about 30 classrooms worth of furniture being replaced at Waco High School over the break. 30 classrooms will receive new student desks, as well as a teacher desk and a new bookshelf, and those will be installed over the Thanksgiving break. And so, really excited for Waco High School, and appreciate you all for approving that and allowing us to do that for our students there. Second item I have are some introductions. So I want to introduce some new employees or employees who have transitioned, and we'll start with Carmen Logan. Carmen, would you stand? Carmen has recently transitioned, just this past Monday, as a matter of fact, into a new role as the Executive Director for Elementary Education. Carmen is no stranger to Waco ISD. She's spent a total of nearly 29 years with the district. She taught at University Middle and Soul Ross Elementary for a combined nine years. She's also served as a Professional Development School Coordinator, a Reading Coach, and an Elementary Assistant Principal. Most recently, however, she has led Alta Vista Elementary as their Campus Principal since 2014. Carmen has a Bachelor's Degree in Elementary Education from Baylor University and a Master's in Educational Administration from Grand Canyon University. Congratulations to Carmen. Carmen, did you bring any, you have any family with you this evening you'd like to introduce?
I did.
Good, thank you.
So he's got a lot of things.
Oh, thank you.
My oldest son, Austin, who also has worked in the district and appointed some of the leading subjects, and then my younger son.
Great.
Thank you for joining us. Congratulations.
Thank you for stepping up, Carmen. We appreciate that. Josh Wutcher is here this evening, and he will join Waco ISD as the Executive Director for Communications on December the 9th. Josh comes to us with a great variety of experience in media and communications. He has worked for the Baylor Lariat, the Journal of Popular Culture in Michigan as an anchor, reporter for KWTX News 10, and most recently, as Communication Specialist for Belton ISD. Josh received a Bachelor's Degree in Telecommunications from the University of Florida, a Master's in Communications from Baylor University, and he is currently pursuing his PhD in English from Michigan State University. Welcome, Josh. Would you like to introduce your guest?
Uh, your wife, Ashley, and your grandparents, John and Doran, all over here.
Thank you so much. Welcome to Waco. And when does Josh start?
December 9th.
December 9th.
Is that correct? That's correct.
Okay. Welcome.
All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Next is our Consent Agenda. Item H has been pulled for no action, and I didn't know if anybody had any other item on the consent agenda that they wished to pull for further discussion. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to present the consent agenda with the exception of item H.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Cordewag and Ms. Houston. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any post? Hearing none, the consent agenda, with the exception of item H, passes unanimously. Item 9, review, discuss, and take action regarding the required annual evaluation of the performance of campuses operated by Transformation Waco. Mr. DeBeere.
Thank you, Madam President. In 2018, Transformation Waco accepted the assignment of the performance contract to operate five campuses: Alta Vista Elementary School, Brook Avenue Elementary School, J.H. Hines Elementary School, G.W. Carver Middle School, and Indian Spring Middle School. That's a process of becoming an in-district charter operator that's laid out in our Board policy at ELA Local. And that policy requires that each year, once the Board has granted a charter or a performance contract to an operating partner, that the Board conduct an annual performance review, looking at how the campuses operated by that partner are performing with respect to whatever standards the Boards established. In this case, the standards that the Board established are laid out in Addendum 3 of the performance contract, and you can find that in its entirety in your packet, beginning on page 110. But we're going to go through the key performance metrics, starting with those that apply in this year, and then looking at some additional performance metrics that will apply for those five campuses next year. I think it's important to keep in mind that the partnership with Transformation Waco was something authorized under a new state law in 2017, often referred to as Senate Bill 1882. And what that law said was that if you gave significant autonomy and authority to an operating partner to operate campuses, that those campuses in return would receive certain benefits, specifically some additional funding, and of significance to those campuses at the time the partnership was formed, a two-year pause and accountability interventions. So as we began to look at moving into the performance contract that Transformation Waco accepted assignment of, we had five campuses that for five or more years in a row had not met state academic accountability standards. And so, as a result, under a law passed one session further back than Senate Bill 1882 in 2015, those campuses would either be closed if they failed to meet again that year, or the Commissioner of Education would impose a Board of Managers in the place of the elected Board of Trustees. So, moving forward to 2018, we entered into the performance contract. In August of that year, the state's accountability rating system changed. Alongside that, four of the five campuses moved out of that improvement required rating and met standard. Brook Avenue remained improvement required, but because the partnership was in place and the campuses had been granted eligibility for Senate Bill 1882 benefits, in that 2018-19 school year, the intervention of closing Brook Avenue or imposing a Board of Managers didn't apply. So that brings us forward to 2018-19, when Transformation Waco began operating those campuses in earnest. You might keep in mind, they took over in the summer. Really, at the very end, it was technically part of still the 17-18 school year, but after STAR testing and the types of things that allow us to establish an accountability baseline had happened. So when you look at the performance standards that are laid out in the contract in Addendum 3, there are just a handful that apply in the first year in which Transformation Waco operated the campuses. The majority of the performance metrics deal with student performance on STAR tests or student performance under the accountability rating system. And the contract extends the benefit of that two-year pause and interventions to those campuses. And so, in essence, they have a set of performance metrics that they, we're certainly going to look at tonight, but that they weren't required to meet specific targets for in 2018-19. Then you have a set of performance metrics that they were required to meet specific targets for in 2018-19. And the first of those was meeting a target for a percentage of students meeting their expected growth on both the ELA and math NWEA map assessments. These are significant for a couple of reasons. First, they're nationally normed assessments, and so that means not just that you see an individual student's results in the context of a class or a school, but that you can take that student or that campus and place it in a national context to look at whether or not students are performing where you would expect students in that grade level to be. The way the assessments are designed, they're designed to be administered with a beginning-of-year test after about four weeks of instruction. That allows you to set growth targets for the course of the year, a middle-of-year assessment, and an end-of-year assessment. What happened at the campuses operated by Transformation Waco in 2018-2019 was different. There was no real beginning-of-year assessment, and in essence, at the campuses where the assessments were administered, they picked up in the middle of the year administering a test in March to grades kindergarten through second. The remaining grades in elementary school weren't tested, and the middle schools weren't tested. Then they came back at the end of the year, and in May, administered a second test at two of the three elementary schools. At J.H. Hines, the next test wasn't administered until the beginning of this school year. So as a result, we do have a little bit of data for those kids in kindergarten through second grade, but it's really hard to relate that data to the specific performance metric that Transformation Waco was expected to meet because the test, the assessments weren't implemented with fidelity in a way that allows us to really see that growth, and for the growth targets to be created at the beginning of the year as intended. So, as a result, our assessment of Transformation, the five Transformation Waco campuses on this performance measure for 2018-19 is that it's unknown whether or not they met their target, because we don't have that data for all grade levels, we don't have that data for all campuses, and we have significant questions about the reliability of the data in the grade levels where it was administered in those two assessments. The other piece that's significant about this, because the two-year accountability rating pause applies to the campuses and the performance metrics that are related to the accountability system and STAR tests, this was the only academic performance metric that applied to the Transformation Waco campuses in 2018-19. It was a metric that was designed to give you, as the Board overseeing the performance of these campuses, a way to compare them to other schools and to other students by grade level, and we just really don't have that data to look at. There are, however, three goal progress measures under performance measure number four that we are able to assess and look at this year, the first of which is a teacher satisfaction measure. And if you're looking through the full evaluation that's in your packet, you'll find this section in the chart that's on the screen on page 90. So, one of the things that's interesting about this progress measure in the performance contract is that there's not a specific device that's identified as the way to measure teacher satisfaction. Earlier this year, in conversations with the Transformation Waco Board, their CEO, Dr. McDurham, recommended a set of questions from the Tazby School Climate Survey that the district administers each year as a way of gauging where teacher satisfaction was in each of the five campuses, and additionally suggested some potential targets of seeing an increase in 5% for performance measures that were below 80%, or an increase each year of 2% for those questions that were at 80% or above. It's important to note that neither your Board nor the Transformation Waco Board has formally adopted these, but we wanted to take the methodology that Dr. McDurham recommended and give you some data to look at for teacher satisfaction at those campuses. And what you see is that four out of the five campuses, if you apply that methodology, met their teacher satisfaction targets in 2018-19. The next goal progress measure that Transformation Waco campuses were expected to meet a specific target on for 2018-19 was parent satisfaction. And Addendum 3 of the contract expresses it specifically as a net promoter score. And so, the idea is that you ask parents whether or not they're likely to recommend the campus to friends or family, colleagues. They rate the campus and their likelihood to recommend it on a 10-point scale. They rate the campus and their likelihood to recommend it on a 10-point scale. The contract sets out that they meet a target of seven for each campus for 2018-19. And as you can see from the data that Transformation Waco collected, each of the campuses very easily hit that target. I would add a small footnote that we will talk about as we move on, looking forward to next year, some recommendations for how Transformation Waco conduct these surveys. Each campus kind of administered the surveys in a series of different ways. One of the things that was consistent across all of the campuses were that the surveys were administered at two family engagement events that Transformation Waco hosted, and so a significant number of the responses came from there. And while that's a great source of data, we're also a little concerned that the families who are most likely to participate in a family engagement event are, by definition, not like the families that are least likely to participate in a family engagement event. And so we want to offer some suggestions for how we make sure that we give all families an opportunity to participate in the survey next year.
Certainly next year, you can't compare the two, right?
Well, I think the idea would be to compare the two by asking the same question in the same way, but ideally to seek out a more representative sample to participate in the survey.
And I guess my question-
So there will be some-
I don't agree with, I mean, I don't disagree with what you're saying, but you are, you know, you're looking for baseline data to compare it from year to year two. That's going to be a new baseline, so I'm sorry.
Yeah, it is, it is a different subset of survey participants likely than a different audience.
Mr. De Beer, don't most parent surveys, aren't they usually conducted through events, whether it's performances, whether it is kind of, you know, as a teacher, former educator for the past 12 years, and even a mentoring director and having to collect permission slips, it's really hard to get some of these papers back. So I know that, you know, there's several methods used, so I would assume an event would probably be the best way to get parents.
Well, I would point to the example that Transformation Waco has highlighted, which is a net promoter score survey that Midland ISD conducted. And in that case, their primary means of distributing it was to email the survey link to parents. They also included students in their survey, but students directly, to send home on paper information about the survey. So certainly, we don't want to say, "Don't collect the survey responses at the event." What we want to say when we get to talking about recommendations for collecting the survey responses next year is to make sure that it's at least presented to everyone. In some cases, it seems like there were campuses where, maybe with the exception of a small pilot in the car pickup line after school, parents who didn't go to one of the family engagement events weren't directly offered an opportunity to participate in the survey. So I don't, we're by no means saying, "Don't do events." We're saying, "Do events," but also make sure that people who don't participate have another avenue to come to the survey.
Absolutely.
What we would suggest the board recommend as part of the evaluation this year.
Yeah.
The last goal progress measure under performance measure number four for 2018-19 was increasing student attendance. I think it's significant to keep in mind, when you look at kind of the counterintuitive trend of what happened here with campuses meeting targets, where you see four campuses improved attendance, but the only campus that met its target was the one that actually saw a slight decline in the attendance rate. These performance metrics were set before we had the attendance data for 2017-18, so they were looking at attendance rates, and in effect, the targets were based off of 2016-2017 attendance rates. And so that's why you see some of the variation in the target, and that's why you end up with this unusual pattern in which only the campus that declined met the target. But certainly, all four, all five campuses met, did well on this measure, they just didn't necessarily hit the specific target set in the contract.
I have another question. The other question was, okay, so we're looking at these numbers with these five campuses. I was just wondering, do we have comparables like state attendance rate or even our Waco ISD, like what the attendance rates are in comparison?
Yeah, I don't have those with me tonight, but we'd be happy to get those for you.
That would just be a nice comparison to see, Waco ISD versus the Transformation Zone and in the state overall, kind of how we're all compared.
Absolutely. I think that's a significant comparison point. You know, we still have the challenge that the targets in the contract are set specifically for five campuses instead of relative performance. The fifth performance measure of the contract looks at the annual financial report, and that report is in progress. The contract doesn't require Transformation Waco to provide a copy of the annual financial report until early next year, so it's not possible to assess performance measure five at this time. They also, because it was such a short portion of their fiscal year that they were operating for in the previous year, in 2016, or in, at the end of 17-18, that they weren't required to conduct an annual financial report for that year. But it's worth noting that virtually all of the financial activity that Transformation Waco engages in is managed by, flows through Waco ISD's processes, and we don't anticipate any issues there. But we'll bring you the annual financial report when you do next year's evaluation. You'll be looking back a year. So those are the performance metrics that specifically apply under the contract in 2018-19. And this is a summary that shows you what we're looking at for each of the campuses. And you really see some general patterns by performance measure and how those campuses performed. Again, the hard part of this is that maybe that most significant of performance measures, the one that relates to academic performance, is one that we can't assess because of how those assessments were implemented. The next piece that I'd like to talk about are the performance metrics that begin to apply in 2019-20. Those are specific targets that the campuses have to meet this year. And what we did was to go through in the evaluation, and because they don't apply this year, I'm not going to take you through individually, point by point, but I'm happy to talk with you about any of them that you would like to talk about. And I'm going to point out a couple of things about performance measure two, in particular, goal progress measure 2.2 and 2.3. But this gives you a broad-based look of, there are an additional set of performance metrics that will begin to apply for each of these campuses next year. The arrows in the chart represent what the trend was from 2017-18, essentially the baseline year before Transformation Waco began operating the five campuses, to 2018-19. And here you really see, whereas on performance measure four, there were some trends kind of by metric, here you really start to see a difference in which there are larger trends by campus. But overall, the trend is generally negative. And that's significant for a couple of reasons. One, obviously, we're concerned when we see student performance moving backward in any area. But two, most of the goal progress measures under performance measure number two and performance measure number three take the campus's performance in the 2017-2018 school year as a baseline and set a target starting in 2019-2020 that's that baseline plus two. So in a number of areas, in order to meet the target next year, Transformation Waco campuses not only have to erase any ground that they lost in 2018-19, but they also then have to make additional progress. So to highlight just a few things about a couple of these specific performance measures, performance measure one is simply the overall rating that the campus receives, and the target for these campuses in 2019-2020 is to receive a C. Those campuses that you see that stayed flat, they had or in Cs in 2017-18, they retained the Cs in 2018-19, they would be at that target already if they're able to retain that level of performance going into next year. Brook Avenue moved up from what was the equivalent of an F in 2017-18 to a C in 2018-19. And so they're also at that target performance level for performance measure one. J. H. Heinz Elementary and G. W. Carver Middle, however, both saw declines, falling back to Fs in 2018-19, so they have further to go than the other campuses, looking at what they have to do to meet those performance metrics in 2019-2020. And then specifically, I wanted to point out, performance measure two, goal progress measure 2.2 and 2.3. We adopted the contract and with it, the performance measures in the addendum three before the rules for the new accountability system were finalized. And so as a result, there's kind of a big caveat at the top of addendum three that says that these metrics are subject to the changes in the accountability rules in the new accountability system. In general, the two systems for the purposes of the performance contract map pretty neatly from one to another. But in performance measure two, or in goal progress measure 2.2 and 2.3, under performance measure two, you saw a significant change in the way that the accountability system reports data. Those targets are both set in the contract as a percentage of kids, in the case of 2.2, performing at the meets or exceeds level, and in 2.3, performing at the exceeds level. After the changes in the accountability system, the accountability report does two things differently. First, instead of reporting a percentage of students performing at a certain level, it reports the number of tests that were scored at that level and attaches a point score to it. And the second thing is, is that it doesn't give you that breakout that we had under the previous accountability system for students at the exceeds level, it groups them together. So what you see in the evaluation is an adjustment of goal progress measure 2.2 under performance measure two, to really shift from that percentage of students model to that score model or to that point model based on where individual tests fall, and then to recalibrate what targets would be for those tests, for the points awarded by test instead of the percentage of students, using that plus two from baseline model that's applied to the other metrics. And because the, just that group that's in the exceeds category isn't readily reported, we've suggested that we drop that goal progress measure under performance measure two. In addition to looking at the performance metrics that apply in 2019-2020, the board policy asks us to take a look at some additional considerations, even if they aren't tied to specific performance measures in the contract. And so a couple of things that the evaluation considers are wraparound services and teacher turnover and teacher experience. To talk first about wraparound services, this is an area in which there's been a tremendous amount of focus by Transformation Waco, and you see a couple of different things happening. First, you see Transformation Waco continuing partnerships that already existed, adding family support specialists, who one of their primary functions is to connect students and families at the campus level to community resources. And then you see some interesting new programs. For example, Transformation Waco, funded through the Rappaport Foundation, undertook a big push to help students who needed eyeglasses get eyeglasses in this last year. And so across the fall, they were able to take 97 students from the Transformation Waco schools who needed eye exams to optometrists in small groups and get glasses donated by the S.L.O.R. Vision Foundation. Then in the spring, on a larger scale, S.L.O.R. brought in optometrists to the Greater Waco Advanced Healthcare Academy, and they hosted a Vision Fest Day where, or actually, two days, where several hundred students were able to get exams and, as needed, get eyeglasses. And so you see some very interesting things happening with wraparound services in Transformation Waco. However, that is not an area where there is a specific metric that's tied to their performance under the contract. The other area that's significant and that has received a lot of conversation is teacher turnover and teacher experience. And Transformation Waco has identified this as one of the biggest challenges that they face in moving student performance in the five campuses that they operate. And so one of the things that they've done is an interesting new program that creates residents who come in, in this case, the schedule changes a little from 2018-19 to 2019-20, but starting in 2018-19, these residents were placed into our summer school essentially as teaching assistants, working for the summer school session alongside a teacher in the classroom, and then they picked up their own classroom beginning in this fall. The residents are earning their teacher certification and a master's degree at the first time that they're tackling learning how to lead a classroom. And so one of the things we wanted to look at was to try and capture something that showed us both teacher turnover and teacher experience to give a sense of what the trends are in the five campuses operated by Transformation Waco, since that's one of the things that they've identified as a key to moving student performance. And so what we looked at were the percentage of teachers on those campuses that had no prior teaching experience. It's certainly a measure of experience, but also if you've never taught before and you're at the campus, it indicates that you're filling a position that was previously held by a teacher, so it's kind of also a proxy in some respects for turnover. And so what we saw from 17-18 into 18-19, the first year that Transformation Waco operated the campuses, was at the elementary schools, we saw an uptick in the percentage of teachers with no prior teaching experience at those campuses. In the middle schools, we saw that decline. And it's worth noting that our trend arrows follow a different pattern here, because ideally, I think we're all aiming for more experienced teachers and less turnover, so we look at the increasing trends as a red. And then you can see some preliminary figures for 2019-2020, based on what our teaching staff looks like as of last month at these five campuses. The last part of the evaluation that we're presenting to you for consideration tonight looks a little bit at what the timeline for next year looks like. As we move into 2021, we're also moving into the third year of the performance contract and the end of the initial contract term. And something interesting happens in the contract at that point, which is, while the contract term ends in June 15th of 2021, we don't have the final academic performance data, the accountability system results that tie into the performance metrics by the time the contract term ends and would automatically renew for another year if neither party takes any action. And so one of the things that we want to do is make sure that this board has the opportunity to fully consider what that renewal is going to look like. In part, your board policy requires you to find that renewing the contract is in the benefit of students before it renews. But also, there's a deadline that happens 180 days before that, where the option going into but not yet having the results from the third year of the contract, the primary option, if you were to decide that you wanted to not continue to pursue the partnership, would be to initiate termination by mutual agreement of both boards. And the contract sets up that that has to be started at least 180 days before the end of the contract term. So that would be December 17th, 2020. So what we're proposing is that we move back the annual evaluation of the performance of the five campuses operated by Transformation Waco next year, so that we're having the conversation we're having tonight in September or October, and then everyone has an opportunity to see those performance metrics and reflect on them before any of the deadlines related to renewing or terminating the contract come into effect.
Mr. De Beer, thank you so much for that full report, and I appreciate all your work. And I know that a lot of people have been doing a lot of work. And so, you know, I think when we say the Transformation Zone, what we're really saying is this community, because I think, you know, some of the background of it was those five campuses were about to shut down. And they had historically been underperforming for five and even seven years, and we could not move the needle on those campuses. And so I think, you know, the Transformation Zone is a unique entity because it's community-based. And one of the big things that we had said as a board, and one of the good things that I think that we heard from the community, was we didn't want to hand over those campuses to a charter, out-of-town charter. So I think when we say Transformation Zone, we're not just talking about a board or people at these campuses, we're talking really about a community that has stepped up to the plate and said, "We don't want these campuses to close, and we want ownership of these campuses." Because if you look geographically at the location of those campuses, there is an equity problem. And I think, you know, the extra funding that we get from the Transformation Zone and some of that really does help towards that equity issue. And so I just wanted to thank Dr. McDurham and Malcolm Duncan and your board, really, for stepping up to the plate and doing a volunteer job that you didn't have to do at a really kind of crucial time, that we needed people to come in and basically save our schools and keep them in the community. So I just wanted to thank you so much for all of y'all's work. I wanted to thank you so much for keeping those schools open. I wanted to thank you so much for keeping those schools open and keeping it within local control, because that means a huge deal, I would say, to us as the board, and I would also say to this community. And so, thank you, thank you, thank you. It was no small feat, as Mr. DeBeer was very intimately involved in all of that. It was no small feat. And so just really wanted to thank you, thank you for doing that. And I guess, Mr. DeBeer, the kind of one question that I have is, you know, because this has been going on for the past eight years, you know, or plus, within this community, is there any way we can kind of see trends? You know, I know that we're just kind of doing the one-year trend on the transformation zone, but what would be helpful is to see kind of the five years before, when they were Waco ISD, what kind of the trends looked like before? Because I know that what's helpful in the field of education is looking at kind of these longitudinal trends. And if we can, you know, I had a conversation with Dr. Kincanon, and I was like, you know, if we can just, you know, start eking it the right way, we can see this trend, we can see if they're heading in the right direction or not. And I think that could be helpful to kind of see, you know, is it just going up and down, or is it actually kind of trending up since kind of the zone has kind of been implemented? And, you know, that would just be helpful to have a little bit of background knowledge when they were Waco ISD.
Absolutely. We can certainly go back further than that baseline year when they were Waco ISD. You know, obviously, when we're talking about the trend with Transformation Waco implemented, what we have at this point is that one year. And generally, when you look at those metrics that apply in 2019, 20, trending downward in a number of categories, but significant variations by campus. And, you know, Brook Avenue, you see almost across the board, everything is trending upward, whereas, you know, you have two campuses where everything in those next set of metrics is trending downward.
Yeah. Well, in over a year time, I mean, that's the one rub in education, is we like to throw a program out there for like one year, and then we're saying, "It's not working," and then we pull it. And we don't give it kind of the longitudinal time that it needs to really kind of take effect, because in reality, what we are trying to, this community is trying to say, I wouldn't even just say transformation zone, but I would say, the Waco ISD School Board, everyone really is trying to see, is a correction of systematic oppression from different institutions. You know, I'm thinking about, in one side of our community, we're finally getting a bank. That's a huge deal, you know? And so I think when we look at programs, you know, we're looking at it in terms of the one-year, two-year, but really, we're looking at, we need to kind of take it all in kind of this, a little bit of an overarching kind of view, because we are trying to correct some systematic inequalities that have been in our community for hundreds of years. And in doing that, it does take a little bit of time, which is kind of why I wanted to see what the trends were starting to kind of look like. And so that would just be helpful for my, to be able to see that. And I was wondering, Dr. McDermott, could I ask a question of you also?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, before we do that, yeah, I was just gonna see if anybody else had any questions of Mr. DeBeer, and then once we get you up there, we can leave you up there and see. And if that's okay with you, Dr. McDermott, because we didn't talk about that. Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Well, I just, so, if memory serves me right, this thing was sort of hastily thrown together June of 2018, and the test results that we're sort of looking at now were taken, what, about eight months?
Spring of 2019, so, yeah.
Eight or nine months later, and then it's just one, of course, we had the previous year under, what, the STAR regime. And one of the things that I, Stephanie, I got to point out, the state changes the way they measure things every two years. Trying to put, I hesitate to ask him to put together, to put in a whole bunch of time trying to come up with a rational tracking.
Well, it's just five campuses, and it's off a taper report.
Okay, let's just five campuses, then.
Or I could pull it up, off the taper.
We're happy to provide.
But like I said, I still would caution you against measuring over a 10-year period. I don't, I think the answer is that probably these campuses have been struggling, and I think we know that. But I just, I've, I'm concerned about asking for a report detailing that.
Great. You don't have to, Mr. DeBeer.
But I, it's, okay. I was just sort of thinking about how the difficulty of that task. It sounds simple, but I'm just thinking about how the way state does things, and I don't think it's simple at all, really. So, time-wise, we're a year and a half into roughly almost the three-year contract.
Correct.
But there's really not anything to be, this, the state money has, there's no decision to be made. Nothing's going to change until the end of the contract, at which point, well, interestingly enough, according to the timeline I think laid out in here, about a year from now, we're going to be looking again at this. Any inkling as to whether or not we'll know at that point if the state intends to continue funding?
We likely won't know.
The additional monies, you know, because I think that's a pretty valuable part of the overall agreement.
Certainly. So we saw something interesting happen in this last legislative session, which was, while the state adjusted finance formulas and raised overall funding for public education, it also meant that that difference between what the campus would receive absent 1882 benefits and what was added from 1882 benefits narrowed a bit. We won't know where the legislative session is going in 2021, when you hit that 180-day deadline, to essentially make a decision if you want it to not automatically renew in June.
And that's, it'd be nice to know by then. And I realize that's not in your hands, and it's a year from now, so, all right, we'll revisit the subject. But for the next year and a half, nothing's going to change, as far as the agreement goes. It will continue.
So the performance contract continues the same. We are, so when you look at the pots of money that have been added to the campuses operated by Transformation Waco, there are two. There's the additional funding that's part of the formula, that's part of the benefits for Senate Bill 1882, and then there's a $5 million Transformation Zone Implementation Grant, which is a two-year grant. So we're in year two of that grant now. However, there's a chunk of money that hasn't been spent so far in the grant. The Transformation Waco will, is expecting to be able to roll over into year three. So of that $5 million, two-year pot of money, some of that will stretch into year three. But absent an additional grant, you know, one of those pots is time-limited, and one of those pots is uncertain. The additional money from the state is uncertain, because we don't know, in trying to make House Bill Three sustainable, what steps the legislature might take in 2021.
Okay. Thank you.
Does anyone else have a question, or Mr. DeBeer?
I have a question, but not for Mr. DeBeer, though.
Okay. I guess it might be for Dr. McDermott?
No, for, uh...
For Dr. Kincanon. Okay, you want to do that now, or we want to go ahead and invite Dr. McDermott up? So I apologize that I didn't get to officially welcome y'all to our meeting tonight and introduce you before Mr. DeBeer began his presentation and Ms. Cordway got ahead of me. So my apologies, my apologies. Dr. Robin McDermott is the CEO of Transformation Waco and the president of your board. Malcolm Duncan, thank you for being here tonight. And then do you have members of your board present that you'd like to introduce? Okay, I wasn't sure. So, Dr. McDermott, thank you for being willing to take questions on the fly. Ms. Cordway?
I did prepare.
So she's well-prepared.
We would like to invite you to attend a Transformation Waco board meeting. They are very, they're very informal, and they are based on questions off the fly, not just for me, but for all of the Transformation Waco principals. It is not unusual for a board member to lean over and ask a Transformation Waco principal, "Please explain to me your progress in attend..." I'm thinking of Carmen, because early on, she was asked, "Explain your progress in attendance." And she stopped and did it, and then took suggestions, and then continued to improve her attendance. So it is a very informal team, and we'd love to have you come and sit through it sometime.
That's great. So kind of going back to Mr. DeBeer's original kind of thing about the first metric of the MAPS. So why, why are you, why didn't you just do K through two, and why didn't you do the entire grade level?
Yes. So as Mr. DeBeer explained, the first administration for the MAPS test needs to take place within those first few weeks of school. We had allocated, the funding for the MAPS assessment was initially allocated through the Transformation Waco Implementation Grant. You may remember that Transformation Waco was the first and only partnership initially, 1882 partnership initially approved by the state. There were several of us that were invited to apply, but we were first, and what the state was learning during that process was just how different each district was going to be approached, how differently they would all be approaching it, and that the grant process required a little more attention than they had initially thought. And so we did not get funded, we did not get the NOGA, which is a Notice of Grant Award, and the release of the funding until after the MAPS window closed. We didn't receive the funding until the NOGA, until mid-October. Also during that time period, when we were trying to figure out what we were going to do about the MAPS assessment that we could not pay for in that window, you may also remember that Waco ISD decided that because it was a nationally-normed assessment, that it had the potential to do a better job of predicting for the entire district. And so the curriculum department made presentations to your board about taking on MAP, and before, before the, I believe, before December, I believe, we had determined that the whole district would be taking on the MAP assessment, but the best way to approach it would be through these lower-grade pilots. And so also a change that happened after the fact was that the district decided to fund the MAP assessment through Title I funding as a complete district program. And we said, through many conversations with the Waco ISD curriculum department, with Dr. Nelson, Dr. Nelson came and presented, or spoke to our board about how to best approach the challenge, and we determined the best way to approach it would be to participate for the first year in the district pilot for those early grades. And we saw it as a collaborative approach and a collaborative solution, but we knew that we would not be able to implement MAP with fidelity in that first year. We knew it early in the year. Our board knew it early in the year, and we just saw that as the best solution to join the district pilot. It wasn't ideal, and we missed the opportunity to hit that measure. What I will tell you is that with that specific measure this year, we administered in September, and we required 95% participation in every Transformation Waco school. The participation in the MAPS assessment was actually higher than 95%. We also have put out some incentives for the zone performance measures for principals, so that we have complete buy-in for the importance of what the district expects from us. So we have 95% participation in the fall administration. We will also, our second administration will be in December, and then the third administration will be within that timeline. And so that's the answer, and we just, we can say that we've really addressed it to ensure fidelity this year.
Right. Great. Thank you.
I also want to point out that we are getting rumblings from TEA, that while there's not a final determination, it is possible that we will not be able to extend the implementation grant into that third year. Most, as Mr. DeBeer pointed out, we're in some areas at about 50% of the spending on that grant, but there were also several initiatives that were allocated for spending in the second year. Because we don't know if we will have the grant extended, we are, we have a plan for spending out the entire grant this year. It would be ideal if it were extended, but within the grant priorities from TEA, we wrote those, the initiatives that are in the grant, for instance, the Alt-Cert program, those programs, if they end in the second year, they will not have a direct impact on campus staffing. They, the 1882 funds and the increase in the state funds, if that funding went away, that would have a much more serious impact on campus staffing. The grant is about innovation, and it's about experimenting with things like multi-measure evaluation and programming. And so that funding in the grant is not, it's, just as every grant, they come, they go. The best way to approach it is to look at programming that doesn't require sustainability. And that's what we've tried to do with the implementation grant.
You actually asked what I was going to ask about the MAPS, so that covered that. But I wanted to thank you, Dr. McDermott and Malcolm Duncan, for inviting me to the board meeting the other day, because it was very, it was interesting and very informative, and also just, you know, getting me up to speed on the things that are going on with the transformation zone. Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming. So far, I think we've had three board members attend our Transformation Waco meetings, and we would love for you to come. And also, I would be very happy to sit down with any board member and just talk through where we've been and where we're going.
Well, I think, thank you for your willingness to answer questions, and we started meeting regularly, Mr. Duncan, and I, and you, and Dr. Kincanon, and we discussed the clunky contract that we have all been presented with, and we're doing our best to work through. Mr. DeBeer did an excellent job tonight of using the document that everyone built on the fly, that was built in a void when nothing else existed, and this community persisted in spite of TEA changing the rules on us at every turn. And so, you know, our contract's the best that we could have expected, considering all the circumstances, and it has been a collaboration, it has been a community effort, and it was everyone's intent, especially this board, to save our schools and our neighborhoods and our communities. So I echo much of what Ms. Cordway said earlier, and I want to thank you and your board. We got a very kind note from one of your board members, I think yesterday or the day before, and it just highlighted for me how we're volunteers.
Yes, you are.
But so are they, and they have really stepped up and are helping all of us kind of find our way through what was a very difficult situation that we're all trying to do right for our kids, is the bottom line. So I appreciate you and Mr. Duncan being here tonight. And unless anybody else has any other questions or comments, there is a request from the administration that we accept the review as presented. So I'll entertain a motion.
What are my options? So moved.
I want a better report.
Oh, Mr. Manning, excuse me, I think you...
No, 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 let's go ahead and do it. Like I said, my question can go after this.
Okay, all right, I have a motion then from Mr. Manning.
My second.
Mr. DePuy, thank you.
We accept the report, right?
Yeah, we accept the report as presented. Mr. DePuy, second, and all those in favor, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. DeBeer, Dr. McDermott, Mr. Duncan. Thank you, Mr. DeBir, Dr. McDermott, Mr. Duncan. And with that, we'll move to item 10.
No.
Oh, Mr. Manning.
Oh, and my question comes from page 99 of this report in our agenda. It says, "Waco ISD does not plan to contract with TASB to conduct an employee climate survey during the 2019-2020 school year." I'm just wondering, why is that, and why we're not going to do a survey?
I can speak to that when I present the district improvement plan, if you'd like. We'll get to that section, if that's okay with you.
All right, then, district improvement plan, Dr. King Cannon.
All right, so this evening I want to present for your consideration the district improvement plan. The purpose of the district improvement plan is to improve the performance of all students. This plan that's being presented this evening was developed with the input of our curriculum and instructional staff, feedback provided from our principals and assistant principals, and it has been reviewed and approved by the QDAC, which is the district's Quality District Advisory Council that is required by policy. Over the last several weeks, each of our teams have met with, our campus teams have met with Denise Bell from the Educational Service Center, Region 12, to review campus student achievement data and to establish goals for this year. So if you'll look in your notebook, you will see those goals in the pocket that we've provided for you this evening. Goals for each domain, student achievement, school progress, which we've looked at growth only, and closing the gaps were set for each campus. Again, you have those. I would like for you to know that South Waco Elementary has not yet included because Denise Bell was not able to meet with that team, and they'll be meeting on December the 4th. Also, I'd like to point out that the Transformation Zone schools, a couple of them, two of them, have also chosen to participate with Region 12 in setting some goals and reviewing data, and that was Indian Spring Middle School and Alta Vista Elementary School. However, Alta Vista hasn't had their meeting yet either, and that will be December 2nd. That was an all-day review with campus leadership teams of the A through F system, looking at each campus's data and establishing some goals. So the idea there was that we wanted to make sure that our campuses understood the A through F system, understood how to leverage their data for improvement, and then to have them establish some goals for this year. So I think as you look at those goals, you can see, you can get a sense of how complex that A through F system is. It truly has been a challenge, I think, for schools to understand the nuances of each domain, and that's why it was important that we have Denise Bell work with each campus team and spend a full day studying, and it did take a full day. And that was aside from talking about instructional strategies. That was purely working through the data and understanding how the rating is developed and where we can leverage some points. And our principals appreciated that process very much. We have an additional day scheduled in the spring with Ms. Bell as well. So they'll be using that data as well as the district improvement plan, which they've had an opportunity to participate in the needs assessment, to develop their own campus improvement plans, which we plan to bring to you in January. Again, I want to remind you that we would ordinarily bring those to you in August, but with me not starting until September and needing some time to conduct a needs assessment, we are just a little bit behind this year. So if you'll go to the plan, I would just note that it is dated 2019-2020, and it does capture enough work there for far more than one school year, and so we certainly don't intend to accomplish all of this in 2020, or in the spring of 2020, but we will continue. If you go to the next page, on page two, I want to note that the district's mission and core beliefs remain intact from the previous year. Tweaked some language there, minor wordsmithing on those core beliefs, but we did not change the district's mission. I think that needs some more conversation with the board and with our administrators, so we'll want to review those in the future with you in the spring prior to developing a 2020-2021 plan. And I don't know how long those have been, that particular mission statement has been in place. Unaware of that. On the next page, you can see the work, or the plan, has been broken into 10 areas or 10 goals, starting with number one there, about retaining highly qualified teachers. And I won't read each one of those because I'm going to go through the sections, but there are 10 areas, and we'll review some objectives and strategies under each one of those. But as you think about those 10 and the things that I want to point out this evening, I want you to think about the idea of developing systems of support. And so you won't see in here a lot of purchases of programs and products. You're going to see more evaluations and processes and aligning the work that is already in place, and there's a, there are a lot of great pieces already in place in the district, and we want to make sure that they are working together and that we streamline them to get the best results. So, think about systems of support, and I'm going to think about those in three ways. The first system being supporting teaching and learning.
Is there a question?
Yes, a question.
Ms. Cordawig.
Just a clarification, so I'm looking at the goals on the table of contents.
Uh huh.
And I was just wondering, are like the top three goals, your top three things that you're trying to do first, or are you trying to do all of them simultaneously?
So it's, this is a system, and everything works together. And so if I were to try to prioritize these, I could prioritize them in any different order on any given day, because everything we do is so interconnected, I would say that it would be difficult. Now, there are some I would put higher, but I think that they all have to be worked on at the same time. And of course, we have, we have different leaders who are focusing on different areas of that work, but as a system, everything is interconnected and impacts each other goal. So it's all working, like your engine, right? Everything works together. So we want to talk about supporting teaching and learning, supporting effective and efficient processes, and then finally, I want to think about developing a culture of support for our schools. So again, not purchasing canned programs, but really building the system and putting the pieces together. On page four is Goal One, regarding recruiting, developing, and retaining highly qualified teachers and staff, and that is to increase the percentage of teachers with more than five years of experience, and also to decrease our turnover rate. So about 35% of our teachers have less than five years of experience, and about 25.9% of, we have about a 25.9% turnover rate. And so that first performance objective there is to really look at the human resources systems and processes to support teacher recruitment, induction, and retention, and this area, I would say, is a high priority, and I did put it at the top because the stability of our staff is critical. So I would put curriculum there too, if I, if the system would allow me to put them side by side, but you can't implement a curriculum without staff, so it's moved to the top. And here, basically, there are a number of systems in the Human Resources Department that have been identified in need of some work, starting with just hiring processes and the process to apply for a job in Waco ISD, and, which is rather cumbersome, and so we've been working already to streamline that. We've been working with our software provider, with a consultant, to help us to streamline that process so that it's real easy, and I think down to one, a one-pager Rhonda's goal is, so we can move people through the system more quickly. We do want to conduct a compensation study to make sure that we are consistent in applying salaries across the district, and I won't read all of those to you, but I'll point out a few. Stat, we want to conduct a staffing analysis, including positions with our federal funds and compensatory funds, to make sure we understand how we're staffed compared to other schools of similar sizes and that we're equitably staffed from campus to campus. On the next page, an audit of employee service records for accuracy. We've had some concern about that that has arisen, and training our administrators on human resources processes and procedures. And then, number 12 impacts the board. You all have had, I believe, three presentations regarding contract recommendations. We'd like to move that to one in the month of April, and so we'll continue to work with our administrators, but we want to make one recommendation rather than three. In terms of that staff satisfaction survey, we did, I did review the data for that. That is a very expensive survey, and I did want to explore some other options for staff satisfaction surveys, because when you give the same one over and over, you may get the same results, and people, and people don't tend to pay attention as much. So I want to see what else is out there, and I think Dr. McDermott actually recommended one to me.
I think that, I think that staff satisfaction survey has been out for the past 20 years. Like, I remember getting something from TASB, and I'm like, click, 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 clicking through. Could I go back to one thing real quick? So the contract with TASB to conduct district staffing analysis, including positions, page title one. So could you kind of speak a little bit to that? We're not like, you're not going in and just saying, okay, you don't belong here, you don't belong here, or what does that look like? Could you flesh it out?
So, good question, both the staffing analysis and the compensation analysis. We want some recommendations on TASB regarding best practices and where we should be, and should we have to make any corrections, then that would be through attrition on staffing analysis. If, let's say we were overstaffed, we wouldn't, no one would lose their jobs. We would do that through attrition, through turnover, if that were the case, and there may be cases where we need to add positions, and we just want them to help us take a hard look at that.
Great.
As far as compensation, if, there may be some recommendations to adjust salaries up for market value, or there may be some people who are paid over market value, and in that case, then their raises would not be as much to offset and get them in line with the system. And so, that's a very common practice with a compensation review. The next section there on page six is to implement innovative solutions and strategies for teacher recruitment, induction, and retention, again, sticking to the same goal. That number one is, is an innovative approach to pulling people together to problem solve. And so December the 9th through the 11th, we will have our community join us with some teachers and administrators to talk about a framework for problem solving called design thinking, and we will focus that, learning of that structure around teacher recruitment, induction, and retention. So I'm very excited about that, and I hope we generate some great ideas together to help us improve. We have Baylor, MCC, Tarleton State, and Texas Tech joining us, as well as some community members, and teachers representing all areas of the district, from special education to elementary, middle, and high school. Also, here, we just want to continue to work on strategies for taking care of our staff, so we want to talk about teacher appreciation activities, how we help our teachers with their mental well-being, and just overall wellness. Can be very stressful to be a teacher, and so we need to identify some strategies to lift them up. On page seven, and you all stop me at any time, seven is about a professional development plan. The focus of the work that we will be doing that goes along with that, those goals that we have set is called data-driven instruction, and we have staff who are trained to deliver that. Dina Cornblum and Kiana White have been trained by the state on that, and they'll be working with our teachers and our administrators to write unit plans, look at the curriculum, look at the specificity of the TEACs, and then help our leaders with some action coaching around that work. Dina is working with the QDAC on a district calendar. I'll be sending you out some drafts that she's developed that the teachers are looking at, and I believe those drafts do have additional professional development days included in them for next year. Number four is about the new requirements outlined in House Bill III for teacher reading academies. All of our K3 teachers and our campus administrators have to be trained in these new academies by 2021, 2022, and those, I believe, are full-week academies, or are they longer? We don't know. 10 days, wow. So 10 days, two weeks, a two-week academy in the science of reading instruction, which I'm really excited about. I think we do need that, we do need that. However, I will tell you, we do have to pay for that. It's a mandate from the state. I don't know the cost of it yet, but the district does have to pick up the cost.
I remember doing a reading academy when I was teaching.
Yeah, the state has previously done reading academies, and this one is different in that it is on the science of, it's really about the brain and how the brain learns to read, which is exciting to me, because I think teachers don't come prepared as well as they should to do that. Number seven on page eight is about working on a summer professional development plan so we can continue to build capacity, and then number eight is to really differentiate for new teachers, because we do have so many new teachers. We want to make sure that we really do a good job of bringing them into the system and making sure that they have what they need before the first day of school. Page nine is, begins Goal Two with our curriculum work, ensuring a guaranteed and viable curriculum customized to the needs of the district. So we're currently using a system called TEACs Resources, and I heard multiple times that that, while that may be a great resource, it isn't aligned to the sequencing that we might want to have with our students, and that we aren't implementing that consistently across the district. And so, we really want to understand our own data and write a curriculum or, and unit plans that meet the needs of our schools, and then use that resource system, if we can, as, just that, as a resource. And then, along with that, develop assessments and an assessment calendar that is aligned to the documents. That's hard work, it's intensive work, and we'll begin focusing on that. Definitely won't have that in place until, hopefully, next fall. On page 11, again, this section is about assessments. We want to make sure, I heard a lot about assessments, principals spoke a lot about assessments in the district. We want to implement common unit assessments, so once you get a curriculum, you want to make sure that lines up with it. I mentioned that already. But we also want to look at the TEA interim assessments, and we've heard that they are really well-aligned, and a good resource for us for the STAR testing, and so some of our campuses are choosing to implement those, but we want to do more of that work. On page 12, 12 is about the district's early literacy program, and- And you all have a new requirement that I want to point out at number one. And that is that you, not that you attend the training, but that you adopt a plan and goals for early literacy and math proficiency no later than the end of the school year. So we've had an initial training assessment, a training session at region 12. There's another one, I believe, in February and we will be bringing those forward to you. So you can expect that to come. And then number five, again, we want to, as we evaluate our program for teaching reading or literacy in the district, we want to ensure that we have staff that is prepared to deliver that. And so that includes not only our professional staff, but paraprofessional staff as well. Believe the district hired literacy aides as a result of the TRE back in 2015. And so there's been a significant investment in those aides. And if, if that is the strategy, then we want to make sure that people are trained. And then that number seven is to identify research-based reading programs with the greatest outcomes for low SES students. There's some research out there on third grade reading and programs that are having the biggest impact. And so we want to spend some time studying that. Page 14 is informa, again, focused on the dis, excuse me, on our curriculum and instruction. And this one is about GPA calculations. And we want to make sure we understand how students are assimilated into class rank. We want to study our class rank policy. And we want to work with our counselors to make sure that we are all in sync on academic advising and looking at our transcript process for incoming students and just making sure we're all doing the same thing there and that we're doing it well. Page 16 is our foreign language program. Won't spend much time there, but I will mention that we, I have had some parents visit with me about the foreign language program. We don't offer the same programs at both high schools and we do have students who, there's, there are, there's some frustration with students who are in classes with Spanish speakers and we don't have a differentiated course of study for Spanish speakers versus non-Spanish speakers. And so that makes it challenging. So there may be a way that we can award some credit to students who qualify and advance them more quickly if they have that as a, as their language. I'm getting there. Page 18 is regarding our targeted improvement in comprehensive plans. And this is about, all about compliance to get off the TEA lists and implementing the strategies and activities required by the state. Page 20 is related and it is on making sure that we understand the A through F system. We've spoken a little bit about that with the work of the service center. And we also learned that we need to do some work on understanding TELPOS.
Yeah.
Which is, which is a part of the rating system and impacts our, our overall ratings and our federal ratings. And so there's work to do there. On page 22, do you have another question?
No, no, I have a technical.
I'm, I'm going to keep going unless you stop me. On page 22, 22 is about CCMR and understanding where we are in terms of those, the state criteria for achieving the CCMR credits. Along with that comes with the TSI testing practices and we have some, some things there that we want to take a look at. Also, I'd mention that we want to take a look at special education students and how they're awarded their CCMR credits to make sure that we've accurately coded them so that we get all of the credit that were due. Page 24, again, is about coding in a number of areas. And we've, we will work with the service center. They've already been very helpful to us in looking at PMS indicators for A through F. And then we want to take a look at our coding for attendance to make sure that that's accurate. Okay, page 26 is a big one. Y'all are all there. And this one is about the dropout rate and improving our graduation rate. We, this is data that runs a year behind by the state. For the class of 2018, our four-year longitudinal graduation rate was 76.1%. And that was low and put us on a list and we were flagged by TEA for that. And so we have a plan due to TEA tomorrow, required for us to identify our strategy for addressing that. So you can see the activities that we have listed here, 22 of them, to begin to work on attacking those numbers so that we can improve. And so we want to make sure that we're tracking kids, monitoring their achievement and their attendance. And we want to look at the transcripts of those 2017, 2018 cohort to see what happened, see if we can identify some trends in the data. We'll look at the special ed and bilingual ESL students who were, where we had the most dropouts and to understand what happened with those students so that we can inform instruction and even goal setting with IEPs. Number five, we'd like to contract for a review, a program review of Brazos High School. We have a large number of our students at Brazos High School who aren't graduating even with that strategy. So we want to see if we can make some improvements there and make sure that's the, the best way to, to get our students across the line.
Yes, just, you know, I was wondering in the bilingual ESL students dropping out of school, just, and I know you're probably going to do this, but just looking at kind of the cultural expectations that might be there for those students and really getting whoever it is, maybe from the community and who is maybe bilingual or ESL themselves and, and really being able to speak into that. Because I think that, that to me just kind of screams, okay, maybe, maybe there's something there that's deeper than just kind of what we kind of see on the surface, but maybe there's something cultural there that kind of needs to be taken.
Yeah, I think that's great. And we, when we get to the bilingual ESL section, there's an expert that we can bring in to help us and that we've identified for a program review there to see what we may need to do. I think we definitely have some, we need to build some capacity in both programs, special ed and bilingual ESL. Are there any of those that you have a question about? A lot of that is about staying after it with those kids and making sure they have graduation plans and following up, making sure that they're in school and coming up with some creative strategies for credit recovery and even wraparound services there. Okay, page 29 is special education. We also have a report due to TEA or we have just recently submitted it. Oh, let's see, Charlotte. But special ed is an area that we need to focus some more on compliance for initial assessments. But we also have some programming issues that we need to talk about in terms of course offerings at various grade level spans. I had some questions from area superintendents about the, the day school for the deaf, which the district operates and making sure that we, we are taking a look at the funding of that. And so that's on the list. And then crisis prevention intervention, intervention training is another area to focus on. There is the bilingual ESL section on page 30. And I will point out, number one is the review with Dr. Monica Laura of that bilingual ESL program to help us identify ways we can improve. And then number five is, is one that's tied to House Bill three, so I thought I would mention that to you. There is additional funding for dual language programs and the district has started a dual language program and may want to expand that. So I wanted to highlight that for you. On page 31, we have dyslexia in section 504. And this was an area of, also a focus in the last legislative section, session. And we've already separated the duties of accountability and assessment from dyslexia. We had those combined in the district, so we, we've made that change already, but we have some work to do there. Okay, moving on. On page 34, this one was, came in as a result of just observations of books and libraries through campus visits and then feedback from staff. And so we want to evaluate our library collection and our staffing plan for libraries and then just talk about how we get, how we get books in the hands of our kids in general. Page 36 is one that I'm passionate about. And it's about college, increasing achievement on college entrance exams and creating a culture of strong achievement in that area and really honoring students who advance to the higher levels and are able to receive recognition and scholarships for their achievement. Page 37, you have a question there? Yeah, Ashley Duncan is our director. On page 37, we begin to talk about safe and supportive learning environments. This is a big focus of Senate Bill 11 with mental health and safety and wellbeing. And we're still unraveling all of the pieces of that legislation, which includes threat assessment training for, for school, for each one of our schools would, will be mandated to have that. We do have staff here who has participated in the training, excellent training. I've been through it. It will be, it will be a system that will be, it will require some extensive work to ensure that we do what we need to do with fidelity. On the next page, again, a culture of support, thinking about social emotional learning. We have principals who are ready to implement that. Some have implemented that with some free curriculums. We may have some purchased curriculums in place on some campuses, looking at staff, but we don't have consistent implementation across the district. And that is a really important thing when you talk about taking care of kids. And this is really to help them, help develop culture and help them to regulate their own behaviors. So that is an area where we may actually need to purchase something. And then closely linked to that are our behavior intervention programs. The district has a number of pieces connected to behavior. Lots, again, like the literacy aides, there are behavior aides, there are reset classrooms and lots of pro, several different programs that are being implemented. And we, we want, we need to sit down and pull those apart and make sure that we're all, again, aligned. Page 40, moving into processes and systems. We're working towards the development of a set of administrative regulations, which we anticipate having done by the end of January. Next page has to do with just our transfer intra and inter district transfer processes. Lots of system pieces there. On page 43, this is an important one. They're all important, but this is a biggie. This is about improving our processes and use of our student management software, which was formerly called Teams. It's now called Frontline. And we have contracted with a software developer to help us go back and make sure that we have our system set up accurately and that we're using it to help us streamline processes and that it's not slowing us down, but rather helping us. Page 44, here's one of those that I would probably move to the top if I, if I, but this is where it landed. Build capacity for school leadership. And there are a number of activities here, but this is about building a team of leaders who are focused on the same work. And so we'll, we'll be working towards that, beginning with the data-driven instruction. But not only that, but with our summer retreats, some book studies, our principal meetings, good communication through newsletters. Goal eight is on our technology systems and infrastructure. Where, there are a number of things that were already in progress in the district for goal eight, from implementing a new phone system to new email system to planning for the implement, implementation of new wide area network. And so those are all in progress. We'll be focused on completing those and there's some, also some state requirements in there about cybersecurity plans. And, and then the one that, on the next page that was important to me is number three, making sure that we have devices in, that are updated and usable in teachers' and students' hands. And I will note that we have state testing, online testing requirement coming by 2022. So really important that we update that. That will be a, we, we will need to make a significant investment in funding to get there. So Darvus and his team are working on that. All right. And then on page nine, this is an area that I think the district has done really well in. Goal nine, I'm sorry, page 48. And that is community engagement with the Stars Book Clubs, the Inspiracion, some of the sororities and retired teachers who have been volunteering in the schools. And so some really great work done there. And I would mention to you that I will be participating in a Q and A with the NAACP on December the 9th and you're all welcome to attend that. Well, without a quorum, yes. So if you're interested, let me know and we'll keep track. And then page 50, facilities. We have a lot of portable buildings and we want to study that. We have some aging portables, we have some leased portables and we'll spend some time evaluating those. We will continue to talk about the venue project. We'll can, talk about Waco High School and I foresee a citizens' planning committee coming together to talk about a 10-year facilities plan so that we can discuss renovations and improvements and maybe even some new schools in the future. And page 51, I only have one more page. On page 51, we, I wanted to let you know that we do have a five-year facilities assessment that's in progress by a company that subcontracted through school due called Alpha Solutions. We'll be meeting with them soon to understand what the product is that we will get from them. And that was already in progress and so I'll keep you posted on how that develops. so I'll keep you posted on how that develops. And then finally, on page 52, I think it's important for the board to have a capital projects plan so that as you identify projects and as funding becomes available, that we have a list of things that we continue to work on that may not be bond project-type items, but bigger-ticket construction items that you guys may want to address as you can. And so that is the 2019-2020 district improvement plan, and I will answer any questions you have. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Looks like you're really going to be bored and just twiddling your thumbs.
We will be busy, and I will tell you, this is not an unusual size of a plan for me. So I'm always moving, I'm always working on the work. So, but we do have some systems and processes we want to address, and it, we really want to get down to the essential work and see what we can do. I want to thank my team for all of their work to complete this and, and the work that they will do.
We might, we might be needing to supply them some coffee and expresses.
Great.
Thank you. It's very impressive, and I saw each of your names in each of those squares, and I'm sure you did too. Yes.
Welcome.
Welcome, to those of you new.
Not new to our district, but definitely new to the world.
A new district improvement plan. Quite amazing considering you've only been here 11 weeks and an enormous amount of work.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, well, gosh, with that. Oh, well, I do need a motion to approve the plan as presented, if anybody would care to do that.
So moved.
I'll make a motion that we accept the plan as given.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. A second?
Second it.
Thank you, Ms. Houston. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, thank you. Carries unanimously. Thank you. Before I invite Mr. DeBeere to the mic, I just want to say that, as you can tell, we're all really working, everyone's working. The board had a, a team-building session last week, and we are all committed to doing the work, to moving forward. We're excited about what's to come. I, I noticed the Race Equity Workshop was mentioned in the district plan that principals are going to be invited to attend. I attended last week for a couple of days. I know Ms. Quarterwig attended in the spring, and Dr. Kincanon attended the Race Equity Workshop on her second day of work with a couple of our principals. And I was hoping we'd have some principals at the session I attended last week, but unfortunately none were able to attend. But hopefully, as Cooper and Waco keep offering that workshop, we can get more of our staff involved. It seems like I had something else, but I might think of it while Mr. DeBeere closes us out. Actually, we're going to, we have, we're going back into closed session to address items that we were unable to get to on our agenda while we had our folks waiting for us at 7:00. So, Mr. DeBeere.
Thank you, Madam President. We will, of course, be closed next week for Thanksgiving break, but before our campuses and offices close, we have a really cool way to kick off the holiday season, and that's Waco High School's Theater and Choir presenting White Christmas. There are performances at 7:00 this Friday, at 2:30 and 7:00 on Saturday and at 2:30 on Sunday, and have heard just amazing things about this production, including the snow. And so I hope that you'll make time to go and visit. And then when we come back from Thanksgiving break, we have one of the things that for me is just a highlight of the year, and that's our outstanding teacher ceremony and reception, where we get to celebrate incredible Waco ISD educators from each of our campuses. That'll take place at 6:30 on December 3rd in the Richfield Performing Arts Center at Waco High School. I know all of you will be there, but I would definitely invite anyone from our community who wants to see just the depth of commitment and expertise that our teachers bring to this work to join us as well. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, the board is going to return to closed session per Texas Government Code, Section 551.074. We will not be taking any action when we return. You, of course, are welcome to stay and tell us all good night, but I don't recommend it. So with that, good night and happy Thanksgiving. 21, and we are adjourned. Good night.